Okay, it's four o'clock and we'll go ahead and get started and call to order the April 11th, 2016, meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, thank you all. At this time, I'd like to have all who are here and able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Item 3.1, the month of April 2016, as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the City of Salina, Lori Blake, CAPS Executive Director, will read the proclamation.
Great. Hi Lori.
Good afternoon.
Good to see ya.
Thank you all for letting me be here today, and I will just read this so you can get on with your meeting.
Okay.
Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. Whereas by providing safe, stable nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services provides both prevention and intervention-based programs in Salina, designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. The agency's many community collaborations respond to a variety of human needs and conditions, keeping appropriate child development in the center of all strategies. CAPS responds to a variety of human needs throughout central Kansas while serving any family while not charging any fees for our services. In 2015, 151 child victims of abuse or neglect or witnesses to a violent crime received advocacy, a medical exam, and care by trained SANSART staff, referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and a forensic interview at Chris's Place Child Advocacy Center hosted at CAPS. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between the City of Salina and Saline County Law Enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, the Department of Children and Families, Child Protective Custody Unit, Saline County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists. And whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1976, the agency wishes to create awareness through the following free public events: A moving Pennwell Garden all month to represent the number of children and families served by our CASA program annually; A prevention tailgate at the Salina Liberty Football Game on Saturday, April 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.; and through the Poetry for Personal Power event at AdAstra Books &amp; Coffee House on Friday, April 29th, at 7:00 p.m. All of these are free of charge to the community. Therefore, we hope that Mayor John Blanchard, City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, does proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month.
Well, thank you very much, and yes, I do enthusiastically proclaim this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you for—here's your signed proclamation—thank you for telling us all the events that are going on, and really appreciate all the community collaborations that you outlined there, but also I know there are many more. So, thank you, and best of luck in continuing the great tradition at CAPS. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item 3.2, the day of April 29th, 2016, as Arbor Day in the City of Salina, Sidney Soderbergh Tree Advisory Board Chairman will read the proclamation.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. Arbor Day proclamation reads, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Salina has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting resources, now therefore I, John R. Blanchard, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2016 Arbor Day in the City of Salina, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Date of this day, the 11th of April. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and for all that you do, and especially for your advocacy for trees and beautification.
And if I may, just have a few more comments?
Please do.
Okay. For 144 years, there have been Arbor Day celebrations throughout the United States and other nations around the world. But for 40 years, the Tree City USA program, sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, has recognized towns that have organized community forestry programs, which are then supported by municipal ordinance to meet certain standards. One of those standards is to have an Arbor Day ceremony and a proclamation read, just like the one I read. The state of Kansas was one of the very first states to become involved in this Tree City USA project. Today, there are only 16 cities in the United States that have been a Tree City for all those 40 years. You might be as surprised as I was to learn that Kansas has four of those 16 cities, a quarter of the total. And those four communities are Clay Center, Dodge City, Junction City, and Newton. Salina was a little slower on the uptake, and we're celebrating our 26th year as a Tree City. All of us have watched and lived through the Arnhem Street Project. As wonderful as it now looks, unfortunately, 33 trees were lost due to the construction process, some of the oldest trees in Salina. It was the Tree Board's goal, supported by city staff, that every tree removed would be replaced. Steve Blue, our city forester, has become a door-to-door salesman, going house to house encouraging those who lost trees on iron to have new ones planted in their yards. As a result, 29 trees will be planted on 13 properties, with the balance of the trees to be planted in Lum Park, behind the community theater. This is an important step for us because last year, 71 trees were removed in Salina by city staff, but only 50 trees were planted. The Tree Board would like to thank the City Commission for reinstating in this year's city budget the Cost Share Program. We strongly believe that program has an impact. The Tree Board encourages you, the City Commission, and city staff to continue to commit resources and partner with the Tree Board to find ways to halt the net loss of trees in our community, which will gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I'd like to present to the mayor a Tree City USA ball cap, because I think he might actually wear it, and especially invite you to be a part of our Arbor Day event as we plant a tree at the Martin Luther King Day Care Center on Friday, April 29th, at 9:00 a.m. The rest of you are invited as well.
Great. Well, thank you. How's that look, guys?
(laughing)
Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, and I'll tell you what, in line with that, and Miss Soderbergh could appreciate this, is the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The second-best time is today. So, we're glad that those residents are planting those 29 trees, and look forward to 20 years from now when we see how really nice that street looks. Okay, we'll move to Citizens Forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda, and we only ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. You give your name and address, and we won't promise any action today, more than likely not, but we will make sure that we take it under advisement. So, if there's anybody here for Citizens Forum, please come up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jim Bent. Live at 1115 Andrew Avenue, our first city. I recently received the spring 2016 edition of the Salina Citizen, in which I read statements of the virtue of raising the local sales tax. So, four points of order, as it were. One, quote, "A major park improvement includes a reasonable and slimmed-down approach renewing the Smoky Hill River," end quote. I assume this is the closest we get to an acknowledgement that the initially proposed river, Black Hole, was unreasonable and bloated. Two, quote, "While there is no perfect tax," end quote. Well, I disagree with that. I think the perfect tax is one that leaves my money in my pocket. Three, quote, "A sales tax is based on consumption and is much fairer than a property tax." I disagree with that wholeheartedly. "A sales tax is by definition a regressive tax, which by definition puts a disproportionate burden on poor people. I suggest to the author of the Salina Citizen that they study the concept of marginal propensity to consume. That's the dictum that points out that poor people spend a higher portion of their incomes for necessity than do the rich." Four, quote, "To date, the private sector has raised $4.5 million in contributions and pledges," end quote. I personally don't know of any evidence to show that. I'd like to see the book on that one. I doubt that that much money is committed, or in the bank, or pledged. In fact, that puts me in mind of the line from Chico Marx in Duck Soup, "Which are you going to believe, me or what, your own eyes?" So, in summary, the proposed sales tax, I say no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll return business up here, and we'll take a look at the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 4th, 2016. Item 6.2, authorize a contract with Claxton Fence LLC for the construction of fencing at the new dog park in the East Crawford Recreation Area in the amount of $34,225. 6.3, adopt Resolution Number 16-7338, authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement for workers' compensation third-party administrator services with CCMSI, Inc. Item 6.4, adopt Resolution Number 16-7337, authorizing an agreement with USD 305, assigning three uniform law enforcement officers to serve in the School Resource Officer Program. Item 6.5, authorize staff to submit an application on behalf of eligible local agencies for the 2016 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant Program. And Item 6.6, authorize the mayor to approve Change Order Number 3 for laboratory support site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Science Corporation, DBA as ESC Lab Sciences, in the amount of $22,080. Change Order Number 7 for laboratory support site-wide remedial investigation to Pace Analytical Services, Inc., in the amount of $51,419. Change Order Number 7 for surveying support site-wide remedial investigation to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., Engineers and Architects, in the amount of $4,880. Change Order Number 8 for drilling support site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Service, Inc., in the amount of $28,000.
Okay, is there any item on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to have removed or amended? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. I think all we have is administration.
Item 7.1, Kansas Department of Transportation Federal Fund Exchange, 7.1A, authorize the city manager to sign a request from KDOT to exchange 2016 federal funds for the Centennial Road Improvement, City Project Number 14-3055. 7.1B, Resolution Number 16-7339, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT to exchange the 2016 federal funds.
Okay, great. Mr. Stat?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The last few years, it's like almost back to 2011 was the first time we started with this program, KDOT has allowed cities to utilize the funds that they receive from the federal government to exchange those for the cities to use with a lot more flexibility and less federal oversight, basically. So, it just costs us quite a bit less as far as inspection and engineering, and we're able to have a lot of flexibility with the funds. And so, since 2011, we've started utilizing this 90 cents on the dollar program to utilize those for just city projects. And so, anyway, this is another year of doing that. It's a little unique today because we're asking for—they sent the agreement and the request at the same time, so we're able to get them all done at the same time. Usually, we have the request, and then a few months later, we come back with the agreement. So, this is the first step, is just the request to exchange these funds, and the CIP for the next five years has us using those on Centennial for the next two years, and then also we used them on iron as well the last few years, and then Country Club is after that. So, that's kind of Rod, our finance director, figures out where's the best place to use them, and so we have the flexibility to put them in those projects for the next few years. So, I will stand for questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Stat? You got all your questions last week.
I got a few last week, yes, thank you.
Yep, as you said, this has been happening since 2011, so this is fairly routine.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I was a late arrival to the agenda. I might have tried to get it on consent, but...
Anything since 2011 that we've been doing this? Has there any—got along pretty smooth?
It has, and surprisingly, yeah, they haven't had any issues with our requests, and we actually received both allotments for Iron Avenue, the last one coming in today.
Okay.
So, that's good news. So, we're paid up as of now with half a million dollars checked today from KDOT, so it was nice.
All right.
So far, so good.
Looks like they still have money.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item today? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a request from KDOT to exchange 2016 federal funds for the Centennial Road Improvement, City Project Number 14-3055.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to authorize the city manager to sign a request from KDOT to exchange 2016 federal funds for the Centennial Road Improvement, City Project Number 14-3055. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
And I move—oh, I'm sorry. I move that I wait for you to discuss this.
Well, I appreciate that. I shouldn't have stood up, should I? It's my own fault. Yeah, this next item is just the actual—city manager signs the request, and this is actually the agreement. Once that request is processed, then they'll sign the agreement as well, so we're going to send it all to them at the same time. Agreement is fairly routine and has been reviewed by the city attorney, and as long as they have the agreement, then we get the check once the project's done. So, they're a little more efficient now than they used to be.
And when will they begin mobilization on that, then?
Centennial next week.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, is there public comment on this item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for action on this item.
Okay. Now, I move approval of Resolution Number 16-7339, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT to exchange 2016 federal funds.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to approve Resolution Number 16-7339, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT to exchange 2016 federal funds. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Stat.
Item 7.2, Downtown Project 7.2A, Resolution Number 16-7341, authorizing the mayor to execute an engagement letter with Gilmore &amp; Bell, PC, for legal services as special counsel for the city in connection with the downtown project. 7.2B, Resolution Number 16-7342, authorizing the mayor to execute a fiduciary engagement agreement with George K. Baum &amp; Company to engage and retain George K. Baum &amp; Company to provide certain advisory services to the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scrag?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Both Gilmore &amp; Bell as our bond counsel and George K. Baum as our financial advisors have served in that capacity for a number of years. In fact, I went back and looked and saw agreements dating back to 1997 with Gilmore &amp; Bell and 1989 with George K. Baum. Suffice it to say that we've been very satisfied with their services and rely on them as it relates to economic development prospects and tax increment financing, development agreement negotiations, as well as a more typical general obligation of bond financing. So, as a little bit of a background, and as detailed in their documents, the role of bond counsel is to provide specialized legal counsel as it relates to the issuance of various forms of bonds. General obligation bonds are a more typical example, but tax increment financing, star bonds, and certainly new market tax credit financing are examples of projects that involve specialized bond counsel and legal counsels relates to those matters. And then similarly, Gilmore &amp; Bell, serving in the role as a financial advisor, assists on the actual issuance of the bonds, taking them to market, preparing them for going to market, and then actually closing on the financial transaction. So, bond counsel kind of provides the legal advice and the financial advisory, while they also provide advice as to what's permissible and recommended on a structure or more on the actual financing side of the house. So, the city's been very satisfied with both of the services of Gilmore &amp; Bell and George K. Baum, and as we go forward with the possibility of star bond financing and tax increment financing and new markets tax credits for the fieldhouse and the downtown projects, both have indicated the necessity to enter into more formal engagement agreements with them. General obligation bond financing is done more on a contingency basis. It's more straightforward in that we commit to the bond financing, and they're able to receive their fees as part of the closing. Economic development prospects are billed on an hourly rate, and they're not on a contingent basis. It's for services rendered, so hence the need for the agreement. And it should also be noted that in the case of George K. Baum, their agreement is more general in nature for their services long-term, and there was a need for required language about their fiduciary responsibilities to us, so they took this opportunity to address that matter as well. So, engaging both of those entities is, we believe, consistent with the strategic plan in that it helps towards the goals of making the city something that—a community that's exciting to live in and thriving both economically and socially, a place with a quality of life that appeals to residents and visitors, a town that is respectful of its heritage through adaptive reuse of historic and architecturally significant buildings. It's also consistent with our strategic plan in creating mixed-use development and having high-quality services and making downtown Salina a thriving and vibrant community center. So, with respect to the fiscal note, as the agreements spell out, Gilmore &amp; Bell's agreement includes an hourly rate of $345 an hour, which is reflected by their current rate. The cost associated with these particular projects is unknown. It depends on the nature of the projects and the nature of their services, but they've roughly estimated a cost of $30,000. In the case of George K. Baum, it's on a percentage basis of the bonds issued, so their advisory fee is a half of a percent of the principal amount for the first $500,000 and a quarter of a percent for amounts in excess of the $500,000, with a minimum fee of $3,500. With respect to the economic development aspects, which could be star bonds, tax increment financing, community improvement districts, industrial revenue bonds, and new markets tax credits, their hourly rate is $200 per hour for consulting services, as well as an issuance fee of $20,000 for transactions that actually result in a closing. So, that's the best I can give you in terms of a description of fiscal note. It really depends on the services needed and the transactions that might ultimately occur. But the actions that we identified for your consideration for both Resolution Number 167341 as well as 167342 would be option number one, would be to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the respective agreement. Option number two would be postponing consideration and asking for staff to provide additional direction—or providing staff additional direction and requesting additional information, or taking no action, which would have the effect of choosing not to enter into an agreement with each of the respective parties. In both instances, staff recommends option number one, passing the resolution and entering into the respective agreements with George K. Baum and Gilmore &amp; Bell. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, questions for staff? I've got a question. Let me start with the Gilmore &amp; Bell portion of this. What—typically, we use Gilmore &amp; Bell for bond counsel.
Correct.
Already.
Right.
How exactly is this significantly different than how we've—is it just in addition to?
I think this is more a recognition that they're going to be on an hourly fee basis, and the cost incurred may exceed the purchasing authority of the city manager, so we're going to proactively engage them with formal action by the City Commission rather than incur expenses in excess of the city manager's purchasing authority.
Okay. Now, when we typically have them consulting with us on GO bonds and other typical municipal-type bonding, we generally get—what is it, deliverable? Is it generally in the form of a recommendation, or is there more of a—I can see with star bonds and some of these other unique packages where we're not all familiar with the way they are. Will there be a different sort of deliverable to where—in other words, is there a way that we'll get this in English?
Mayor, I think Greg can answer that, but I wanted to add something to what Mike had said on the last question. The difference between today and typical—typically, we'll know for sure when we're issuing general obligation bonds, so there's not a concern from them that, oh, we'll just change our mind. We won't issue bonds, and there'll be a cost of services incurred, so it'll always be wrapped up into the bond issuance. In this case, we're very, very confident, but we, of course, are still waiting to hear from the Department of Commerce on star bonds and so forth. So, there's pre-project costs that we believe will get reimbursed and all that, but from their perspective, it doesn't automatically get put into the bonds at this point until we know for sure there are going to be bonds and how much it'll be. So, that's where what Mike was talking about. We wanted to be sure that in the pre-work, if it goes beyond my perp— to be sure that in the pre-work, if it goes beyond my purchasing authority, that we have the proper authority from the use board.
Right. Because, I mean, when I read in here that it's for due diligence, I'm just wondering, is the deliverer that we, what they deliver to us, is it going to be in a different format because we're going to have unique, more unique types of decisions that, and probably advice that comes through this process? And so it sounds like we, in some way, we'll have a little more information on these than maybe on the typical?
Well, you'll have different, I think it'll be different information with both of these, because again, our financial advisor, our bond counsel, with the typical general obligation bond, they're going to make sure that the information that's produced by us about the bonds that eventually goes to the bondholders, that we meet state law and that that information is clear in the right, proper form and so forth for the bondholders. And they work with us on reporting and all the federal requirements. So they're there for the legal piece of it. And Greg could get into more detail if you'd like. The financial advisors, they're about the structure of bonds, the dollars and cents in and out. When I say structure, we just think of, we issue bonds, we pay them back. But you can structure bonds to pay less early on and pay more later. Some cities do that if they say, well, we're not in great financial shape today, but we think we will be later. So let's structure it that way. And sometimes they're wrong. We usually have a fairly equal dispersment because we don't have that issue. But they can help you with that, negotiate it, or whether you want to go to a bid. And anything that provides a financial strategy aspect to how you want to package up the bonds, that's fairly typical with the general obligation bonds. Now, as we talk to them about particularly the star bonds, that's a whole different deal. And even potentially, the TIF bonds can be, depending on which way we go, if there are bonds associated with TIF. But, so a lot of it is advice at this point as we move forward in the process. And we've gotten that. We just don't want to exceed the authority. So it's helping us make good decisions and we can help inform you. But then as we get closer to thinking about what the bonds might be and the structure that they might be and the laws that affect those bonds, that's when we'll get into more detailed advice from them.
Okay.
If it's helpful, I would add that a typical general obligation bond issue is much more generic, run-of-the-mill. Star bonds, tax increment financing, new markets tax credits are very customized as it relates to the project at hand. And the advice that they're giving us on the front end is acceptable ways to structure the project and the financing that is compliant with applicable law. So it's much more project-specific legal counsel that they're providing.
Okay. And would that go for Baum as well?
Yes.
Okay. And is it, and is it more, are we using Baum now in addition to more now on this project than we normally do? Because it doesn't seem like I've run across Baum as much as I have Gilmore &amp; Bell.
Sure.
What you see George K. Baum historically is more at the point that finance directors reporting out that we've gone to market and here's what we've seen in the way of a rate. What you may not have seen behind the scenes is they're providing financial advice, as the city manager said, about how to structure the bond financing, what are eligible ways to do that. As it relates to the star bonds and new market tax credits in particular, they're also providing advice about the specifics of our particular projects, how they might be able to go to market, what additional due diligence might need to be done to satisfy the bond underwriters and the financial community such that they will be received well when they go to market, that type of thing.
Yeah. They'll also address things like risks. They'll address things like, what you do, how it might affect your bond rating, those types of things.
Who would be responsible for providing us with the information regarding the pro forma? Whether or not projected revenues are kind of realistic or less than realistic or?
That's a very good question. What you're really looking at is a third-party company hired specifically for that. And we've talked about that. We don't know if we'll be affected by the state law. And so we'll talk with Commerce to figure out maybe the best approach at this point, knowing that state law hasn't changed yet, but what if it does, or what's the propensity of that to happen. The last thing we would want to do is to enter into a contract for a third-party review of the risk and analysis and recommendations on the bonds. And that's a very detailed market-type analysis of the information. And then have what we believe is a very, very good document that you can use to make decisions. And then we turn around and find that the law changed towards the end of the session. And they like what we have, but they can't accept it because they've said, well, no, Commerce has to contract for that. So we're looking at that. But that particular service, in this case, would probably either be independent of or run through the financial advisor's side. Certainly, the financial advisor would have a strong role, whether we run through them or we do it independently. They're part of the team.
Okay. So that would be an additional, that wouldn't be really either one of their roles here. It would be...
Yeah, that's a deeper look than what you typically would have.
It's a deeper look, and we will only know there if the state passes on making that requirement, at which time we would then engage that.
Yeah. And our intent is one way or another to do that. It's more about timing.
Okay. Great.
Mayor, if I may, the only thing I would add, the ultimate manifestation in terms of deliverables on the part of bond counsel in relation to any bond issue is going to be on a single page. It is their opinion letter that the bonds are tax-exempt. And any discussions we have or any work that we do locally under their direction is so that they can ultimately issue that opinion. Because as you might imagine, if that were to be later determined to be incorrect, generally, bondholders fail to see the humor in that if they've purchased bonds expecting them to be tax-exempt.
Right.
And they're not. And we've fortunately never had that circumstance, but that is the focus of their efforts, is to be sure that that opinion can be written.
Okay. And since you kind of opened the door on the star bond thing with the state and some of the uncertainty that they may have in the process, how does the timeline on what we're doing here, how is it affected by decisions that might come down from the state to, say they stall this process or something, are we exposed financially to a certain, to all these fees? Worst-case scenario, they don't...
Yeah. I don't see a lot of relationship between simply having authority to engage with the two service providers and the state. Now, depending on what the state does, they'll help us with that. The real relationship between engaging in these two service providers goes back again to what if, what if there's a change in state law and all of a sudden you simply aren't going to be in a position to issue star bonds? And we don't expect that. I'm thinking pretty extreme.
Right.
What if there is, well, they would have provided X amount of hours of assistance to us, and there's not a bond issuance for us to pay them back. So therefore, that's why we do it this way. So we do it ahead of time on all the pre-work. And if by chance something goes haywire and we don't issue bonds, they're paid, which they should be. If we do issue bonds, we can pay, but we can reimburse ourselves back to the bond issuance so that we're made whole.
Okay.
So it's just in case there's not a tool to make everybody whole. We wouldn't want to surprise you later and say, well, we have bad news. Some strange law came around and we can't issue bonds, and we're $60,000 in debt to these two professional service agencies.
Right.
And we're going to have to pay them. You would say, your first question would be, well, Jason, you don't have that much purchasing authority. How did we get there? And I wouldn't have a very good explanation at that point. So that's why we want to be sure and get the authority now. And we wouldn't necessarily expect it to be that high, but if we want to get the authority, because there shouldn't be a purchasing authority question. And we use the services as needed, as minimally as possible. In other words, we're not on the phone every day with them or anything like that. But when we have real, specific questions, and we're talking, you know, as a team, that they're part of our team, and they've been exceptionally helpful.
Okay.
And I would add that all the parties are mindful of this uncertainty of the star bonds. And so we're not getting ahead of ourselves in terms of working through the star bonds. We're really waiting till the pieces fall in place with the Department of Commerce so that we can proceed in that regard.
Okay. Any further questions for staff at this time? Nope. Okay, do we have any public comment at this time? Okay, I see no public comment. We'll bring this back to the commission for action, and we'll do this in the form of two separate motions for two separate resolutions.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-7341, authorizing the mayor to execute an engagement letter with Gilmore &amp; Bell, PC, for legal services as special counsel for the city in connection with the downtown project, including TIF bonds, star bonds, new market tax credits, general obligation bonds, and any other funding mechanisms in connection with the downtown project.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, to approve Resolution Number 16-7341, authorizing the mayor to execute an engagement letter with Gilmore &amp; Bell, PC, for legal services as special counsel for the city in connection with downtown project. Any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-7342, authorizing the mayor to execute a fiduciary engagement agreement with George K. Baum &amp; Company to engage and retain GKB to provide certain advisory services to the city, including but not limited to the preparation of supporting data, bond market information, assistance in obtaining bond ratings, and assistance in investor negotiations regarding various projects which may result from time to time in the issuance of bonds, notes, refunding bonds, and/or the use of other financial instruments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, to approve Resolution Number 16-7342, authorizing the mayor to execute a fiduciary engagement agreement with George K. Baum &amp; Company to engage and retain GKB to provide certain advisory services to the city. Okay, is there any further comment and discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries 4-0 as well. Okay, we have no development business. Do we have other business? No other business. Okay. Wow. No executive session either? Just surprised. Okay, well, I suppose we can have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. While she gulps.
Is there further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 4-0. We're adjourned.